All right, thank you for missing us while we were gone. We'll move on to 1.8, review of the agenda.
Sure, welcome back, everyone. Thank you for being so patient for us for our September board meeting. I just want to point out, this is a little safety reminder. Actually, there is somebody burning their yard leaves tonight, so we did turn our system offline. So if you smell burning leaves, it's outside. There's a real fire, we'll announce it. So it's a risk we are, for rights purposes, we are safe. If you smell burning leaves, it's somebody who's probably racing. So once again, welcome back. Tonight, we have a couple presentations, besides some, actually, two major pieces, besides kind of our opening days of school that we'd like to discuss. We have Ed Anker from CSR, and his crew, will be kind of taking us through kind of where we are on the capital project. But also, very excitingly, we have in our consent agenda, the consideration of Mary Otis for tenure SK, which was also very exciting that. And now we're coming up. She'll be taking us, of course, through her opening days of school as well, so.
I'd like to make an addition to the agenda, and if I could do it right now, I'd like to. So I'd like to tender my resignation, effective immediately, so I will leave after I make this statement. I met with a good friend and mentor about a month ago, and they told me that the best thing I could do would be to resign, take the high road, and say it's for personal reasons. So I'll leave it at that. And I do appreciate the seven years that I spent on the board previous to this. It was a great experience then, can't say the same for now. But I appreciate having the opportunity to serve, and I'll continue to serve in different ways in my community. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I was not expecting that. Let's move on to 1.9, approval of the previous minutes.
Do we have to accept that resignation? I think we have to have a motion and acceptance of that resignation.
I would do it just to be...
Yeah, a motion to accept Katrina Dine's resignation.
Do we have to make a motion to accept her resignation?
Oh.
So, Darcy made the motion.
I mean, you have to...
Wait a second.
I'll take that.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Now, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting.
Make a motion?
Any discussion?
Which one is detailed, or... I was actually going to say, I don't want to put, like, those detailed minutes were extremely...
They were true.
That'd be a lot of work for you. So I don't want that. If we could do maybe the simpler version with a little bit more, and then it seems to be that the community would like the audio, so instead of having it foiled every month and posted on other websites, perhaps we could just talk to Jason McCord and see if we could just post the audio, and then less work for you, and I think it would make people happy.
I had actually printed out, because it was on the agenda, because Katrina wanted it on the agenda tonight for discussion item. I went to some different websites to kind, just other districts, to see what they did. I did like East Green Bush, Troy, Monans, because that's our size, and found a wide variety of, I mean, some are like super detailed, and some are like, but one of them that I did, I think it was East Green Bush, had a section where they went, just listed all the motions and da-da-da, and then if there was any discussion, it had a separate paragraph saying, "Discussion of blank, blank, blank." And then whatever the board member said on it, a synopsis of it.
Yeah.
So maybe we could do something along those lines, not...
Try that for this month, and see if everybody likes it?
You know, and I'll show, I forget which one, I think it was East Green Bush, though.
Okay.
But to kind of just show you, like, yeah, see, so it says, you know, "Discussion on Item, Mr. So-and-so Asked to Request, Mr. You know, So-and-so." So they, it just kind of shows a little bit of the back and forth, and I think that's important for people to see, that it's not just done, not everything is just done, yes, yes, yes. There, you know, we do have discussions on stuff, and I think it needs to be reflected somehow.
Agreed. I think we've heard from a long time, for a long time, that people want a little bit more stuff.
Right.
Okay, great.
Do you still want the audio as well?
In the audio?
Do you want to do the audio?
Yeah.
It's being foiled and put out there.
The audio is very easy for us to do.
If we can technically do it, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, we'll make it as, so we'll try these new, this new model, and the audio.
Okay.
Good.
Oh, sure. This is a suggestion.
Okay. We will move on to 1.10, acceptance of financial reports. Looks like we have the internal claims auditors report for August 2016, and the treasurer's monthly report with budget transfers. Can I get a motion?
We have a lot of paper on there.
I'll motion.
Three months' worth.
Yes, you did.
Would you like a second?
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
Yes.
Just so you know, I did talk to Belle. I'm going to set up a meeting with Belle and just come up and have her refresh my memory on a lot of the workings of the financial paperwork, so that I'm, I don't want to ask a stupid question here, I'll just ask Belle.
She knows I'm stupid.
Okay. We'll move on to 1.11, building use. Looks like we have one for Girl Scout Troop 1314 on Mondays, starting October 3, 2016, through June 19, 2017, in the cafe, five to seven.
I'll motion.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. Move on to 1.12, visitors and communication, Part A, communications to the board. We received quite a few emails or letters this month. I'm not going to read them this month, because there aren't so many. A quick synopsis on all of them. They were just speaking to how wonderful they think Dr. Reardon and Mrs. Otis are doing at the school. I will read who they're from, so they have their credit. An email from Amanda Roke here, an email from the...
Zakarka.
Zakarka family, an email from Lisa Paratino, an email from Jason McCord, a letter from Keith Akats, and a letter from Stephanie Perbo. Is that a... That's it. Okay. Now, we'll move on to Part B, opportunity for the public to be heard.
We have a list.
Oh, good. We will start with...
Carl would, Carl would like to be last.
Carl would like to be... Okay. Next would be Carl Belkowiczki.
Hi, I just wanted to speak first on behalf, in this first period, in support of Mary Otis's tenure. So in my professional capacity, in working for many educational organizations, and in my, you know, personal capacity as a parent here of a second grader, I really never met an educator that has been so dedicated to our students than our own principal, Mary Otis. I find that her knowledge of curriculum and instruction is pretty amazing. I've spoken with her association, and they're pretty wowed by her as well. I really feel that her graphs of the unique situations of our school district, be it both instructional for students with special needs or English language learning students, or both the graphs of finding ways to serve our very large second grade class, is really a wonderful for our district. I don't think it's often, in many of the districts that I've met around the state, to see a small school district have such a great principal. I'm tearing up talking about you. To have, to see a small school district have such a great principal for our students, and I know Jackson loves you. So I told him tonight I was coming to speak on behalf of the tenure of our great principal, and he said, "Give her a hug, because she's my favorite." So I just hope, and that I know this, this parent and education advocate fully supports the tenure of Mary, and hope that she stays here for a very long time and never becomes a superintendent, because then she'll stay with us as our principal, and make our children very happy, and so, probably that. Thank you.
Next up are both Jill and Tim Plannery.
Help is speaking on behalf of both of us.
I don't need to speak.
I just wanted to say that in the 19 years that I've been here, besides when Mr. Bordeck and Mrs. Otis were here as our administrators, this is the best one-two combination of administrators that have been under, or above me for leadership, and I just appreciate everything that they do for me, and everything that they do for the children of my, of our school here, and in particular, my own son, and my son that has graduated from this school. So I just want to commend them on the job that they've done, and very proud of them.
And we fully support your appointment.
Thank you. Up next, Jean Marie Steffek.
Hi. I too wanted to express my extreme gratitude to Mary for all that she has done for this school, and support her tenure tonight as well. I have known Mary since she came here, and at the time, our entire district was going through a very hard period of time. I would call it a period of adversity. Mary stuck with us all through that adversity, and actually triumphed through that adversity. She did it for us, and it took triple the wherewithal to make it through that, because she herself was in a period of turmoil that she never, never talked about or complained about to anyone. And yet, she continued to lead us through that time. And as we've grown out of that period, and have now the addition of Dr. Reardon, I think that our leadership is stronger than ever, and we've had opportunities for our children that we've never had before, and support for our staff that we've never had before. And I wholeheartedly want you to be so happy for us and for you to appoint her tonight. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Jean Marie. Up next is Martha Ryan.
Hi, everyone. Hope you're doing well. I have, I ramble, as those of you know who've been to my open house classroom. Last year, I stood before you at the board meeting to express my feelings about how school had changed for me since Dr. Reardon was hired. I spoke quickly about his teamwork with Mrs. Otis, and after the fact, felt remiss in not speaking more about how wonderful she is, too. Mrs. Otis has brought a joyful attitude to her work in Gardner Dickinson. I see her frequently hugging the children and inquiring about how they are, not asking how school does. I have personally dealt with her with some difficult students, and needed to know we care about them, and that is why we are pushing them so much. She cares and goes out of her way to get that across to these students. Many times, I've waited to speak to her, because she has been busy speaking, whether in person with a parent who popped in, or on the phone alleviating worries of another. She pays attention to every student in this school, not just the high achievers or the low achievers. The kids who try to slink by unnoticed, she makes her personal projects. As for myself, as a teacher in the school, I have received both praise from her and constructive criticism that I take to heart and use to try to better myself. Hearing that you are wrong is hard, but Mary always tempers it with a hug and a positive comment to cheer us up. I have been my happiest in the school after 20 years while they have been here, and I know many others feel the same way I do. Mrs. Otis and Dr. Reardon make you want to both be a better teacher and a better person, and I'm thankful to know I work with them. And please, please marry me.
Thank you, Martha. Up next is Lori Gallagher.
Yeah, I'm going to be really strict on public speaking at all. I basically came today to say that my eldest child is in graduate school, and I've had 17 years in this school district, and I wanted to say that I think it is the most positive, heartwarming, involved administration that we've had in this district. And I really appreciate Dr. Reardon coming. My son graduated last year from the school, and it was absolutely wonderful. Graduation was wonderful, the little note you gave, I still talk about, sent everybody into tears. But it's just, communication and the openness is so much different than it ever has been in this school. And I also wanted to say that it was the first time in 16 years that I was invited in to have a meeting with a superintendent to talk about issues in the school, and I really appreciate that, and it made a tremendous difference. So I just wanted to offer my support on that.
Thank you. Susu Bak.
As many of you guys know, I know Mary on two different levels, obviously as a parent and a volunteer at the school, a member of the PTO. And I find her very approachable, I find her open-minded, I find her energetic, and I find her goal-oriented, and I think the kids' best interests are always in her heart and her, is her interests as well. And I would very much like to see her receive tenure at the school.
Next one is Becky Latieri.
At the end.
Oh, you're at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's, oh, no, Carl. We'll go back to Carl.
Carl Jaeger. Town got about what that word. Couple questions. The, I did not know that the meeting was changed to the third Thursday of the month. And I'd like to know, was it advertised in the advertiser? And I'll tell you how I found out.
It's always been the third Thursday.
All last year it was the third Thursday.
All last year it was the third Thursday.
Because I was new to the board.
When did Katrina's husband get his award down at the town meeting, second Tuesday of the month? Whatever that was, it may have happened after that, okay? But anyway, how did the town know, other than...
It's posted on our website.
Maybe over send home with kids? Was not, good, that leads me into the next one. Couple of years ago, when we were having the meetings to try and get the town together and so forth, because of the few problems we had before, Mr. Reardon, one of the suggestions was made by me, we take our website, we contact Katie Connolly over at the town, and have her put, whatever you call them, so you could hit it, and they could pick up this website, and vice versa. My contact with Katie since then, nobody from this school has ever contacted her. Challenge for you, Mr. Reardon.
Consider it done.
They have a beautiful new sign of the town, did you see it?
Yes, I asked if we could get our veterans hearing, but I guess we didn't...
They were still learning the program.
Well, as long as you mention Reardon, veterans, I'll just continue on. The town Memorial Day Parade, who was a local band, but it wasn't from Gardner Dickinson. They had a small band full of sound. I'm going to be as honest and as upfront as I can be, so everybody understands what I'm saying. We're spending over $100,000 for a music teacher in a music department, and we can't put a band together for a Wine and Skill Memorial Day Parade? I found that terrible, as a representative of the town. Because a lot of people would think more of the school, you know, a lot of people think good of the school, obviously, but why can't we do that?
I guess it's something we could think about.
Okay. All right. We all, so, the advertising info, info, you know, that's something that...
Sure.
Website. Appointment info, questions about appointments. I guess this is the only person here who could sit in a schoolroom behind me in alphabetical order, but nevertheless, that's the way it is. But I have a question, some of the things in here where people are appointed, or whatever the case may be, does not have a dollar figure. I'm a dollar sense guy. In case anybody doesn't know it, now you know it. I like to know the salary. I mean, I can obviously foil it, but, you know, with something like that, I think it's important enough to be in the meeting. Now, you got one down here for bus driver, hard time. Involve any medical, or is that a straight salary, and that's it?
This one's a straight salary.
Okay. Takes care of that one. You've got down here the building use, time and dates. It says Monday from the 3rd of October to 19, but it doesn't say first Monday of the month, second Monday of the month. I think we should be a little bit more clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Got that.
I got it.
That's it for...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good scene.
Before we move on, is there just anybody else that wants to be here? Before we move on, is there anybody else that wants to be here?
I just wanted to say thank you, too. I'm not good to stand up and talk in front of people or write things, because it's a bit emotional, but I can't thank Mrs. Otis enough for taking care of my son, too. Had a problem a couple of years ago, was pretty important, and she gave me the benefit of the doubt and helped with the situation, and it turned out great, and I'm so thankful for that. And Mr. Reardon is wonderful. My son loves him.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I, Peter Kama, I just want to reiterate all of the comments about Principal Otis. You know, I'm familiar with her graduate work, she's a scholar, she's a parent, she's a teacher, she cares about every single student, she's exactly that person on our school. We're here because, I've heard my kids have grown, you know, through great challenges and achievements, and just made sure that they achieve everywhere, and we're absolutely very grateful for that, and we support her. It's a great choice, and a great idea, and thank you for appearing.
Okay.
Excuse me. One more.
Go ahead.
I would like to see the board write a letter, whatever you have to do, for Katrina Dine. Don't her a long time, like I said before, we didn't always see eye to eye, but I think it's up to the board to provide a letter of appreciation to Miss Dine for her work here.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Want to do something on the consent papers?
We'll move on to 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. 2.1, Ed, you're up.
Hi. You don't need to clown. I know you all kind of... I wanted to introduce my team before we get started here, though. A lot of you have met Kyle, and some of you, some of you may or may not know, or have met Ashley. Ashley's actually a resident of the town, she lives on Lucio Court, and right around the corner, in case anybody's familiar with the area. But we're going to give a little bit of an update on the capital project tonight, and we'll let Kyle talk about kind of the design and architecture stuff. Ashley's here, she's done a lot of the work on the interior design, a lot of the finishes that we selected. And actually, just to kind of back up, and I'll throw a little feather in the cap here, too. So, my daughter will be going here next year, she's four and a half now, and she asked me at the beginning of this year, she said, "Daddy, is this the year I get to go to Dargren Dickinson?" And I said, "No, next year, honey." She's like, "Well, at least I have a really good playground." And now, hearing all of the, all the feedback, I really feel really confident about bringing her to Dargren Dickinson next year, so we're, we're really happy about that. It's part of the reason why we live here, so. I'm going to fire this up. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, let him handle this part.
Thank you for coming. Good morning, my name's Kyle Smith, I'm a building designer at CSR. The district asked us to come in today and give you a summary and update on the building addition and renovation project that's scheduled for construction in the fall next summer. So, we wanted to show you some floor plans and also some renderings, which are computer-generated images of exterior and interior, and hopefully get people excited about the project that's coming up. So, I don't know if many of you have seen the floor plans, but the addition is going to be off of the gym side, and it'll be a two-story addition with all-new classrooms, resource, special education, and pre-K bringing to the school. Music will move over to here, along with adding a stage off of the gym. So, here are some of the images that we put together, we're excited to present this to you today. The team has been putting together finalizing details and picking finishes, and you'll see some of that for today. So, one of the exterior views is from the playground. This will be a stair exit from the pre-K, or even the kindergarten, out to the playground. It's also needed for egress for the building. Another view on the backside of the addition is the classroom addition wing. Quickly, on the interior view, that's the pre-K in the bottom right view, we have our new music classroom above it, and some of the ideas for the corridor space. We're going to break away from the color palette that's now in the school. It's good to meet with that slide beside the other one. So hopefully, everybody's excited, we've got these boards placed around the school, so people know what's going on. If you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll play an answer for you. And the site plan. So last time we talked, we talked about some options of parking and tennis court in the back. We've met with State Education Department, and unfortunately, that type of work is not going to get into this project, can always be done in the future, but we are going to add provided parking for drop-off for pre-K in the loop, and a, basically a pull-up curbside parking for anybody that wants to run into the school and get out of the bus loop. State Education Department's also requesting us to do a fire turnaround lane, and that's what you're going to be seeing in this dark gray behind the school. We'll be ended moving the garden, so the garden will still be there, we're just moving it over.
It gets a little bigger.
Yeah. We need water and electric to it. That's what we're sure going to be doing for you, for moving it on you. Ed, you want to talk about schedule?
Sure. So, I just want to reiterate, the two of these guys have been, you know, I've been kind of on the backseat, more of the managerial end of the project, these guys have really done the hard work and put a lot of the drawings and stuff that you see together tonight, so they should be commended for that. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the schedule and where we're at. We're anticipating getting our final approval from SED at the end of, at the end of this month, beginning of October, so we'll be ready to go to bid with the project, and we're going to get right on the street first in January, so right in January 17. We'll hold our preview conference, we'll receive bids from contractors, and we'll make a recommendation toward the construction contracts, probably towards the beginning to the middle of February. We do know right now that the bidding climate is very, very favorable. We did very, very well on all of our school district bids over the last season, and we're pretty confident that, that, that trend is going to continue forward, so we're anticipating and hopeful that budgetarily, we'll be in very good shape within the overall confines of the project. We'll anticipate starting construction on the addition as soon as the ground thaws in April of 17. Not a lot of work is going to be happening inside the building until after school lets out, but we can get started around the back. Our construction management team, who are unfortunately not able to make it tonight, but they'll be working on putting together phasing plans, in other words, when things are going to happen, and how they're going to happen, and when things are going to move, and we'll share that with everybody at the board level, so that, at the board level and the, and the public, so that everybody's aware of what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and how things are going to happen throughout the project. It can be scary, it can be a lot of moving parts, but we're here to help it, make it as seamless as possible. We anticipate being substantially complete by August of 18, so just about, about 15 to 18 months of construction, and then final completion for school start in 18, and then you guys can move right in. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with the, with the overall schedule. Go ahead.
We were looking at this a couple of years ago, a little committee here. There was a couple things to talk about. There was one, putting solar panel panels actually at top, I know that was something just there, I see that, and then the other thing is, is this hill a zero percent tax increase?
The same money that we had before, yeah.
So we're all within budget?
We are, yeah. Right now, we're tracking well within budget. So, to speak about the solar panels, so we ran the numbers to do solar panel on the roof. Now, granted, we don't have a lot of roof area here, and we certainly don't have enough room to do ground mounted. The way that the NYSR incentives have kind of shifted, the dollar per kilowatt versus the amount of roof area, it doesn't make financial sense for the district to do it. In other words, you'd end up having to pay to put it on the roof.
shape, um, within the overall confines of the project. Um, we'll anticipate starting construction, uh, on the addition as soon as the ground thaws in April of 17. Not a lot of work is going to be happening inside the building until after school lets out, but we can get started around the back. Um, our construction management team, uh, who are unfortunately not able to make it tonight, but they'll be working on putting together phasing plans. In other words, when things are going to happen and how they're going to happen and when things are going to move. Um, and we'll share that with everybody at the board level so that, at the board level and the, and the public, so that everybody's aware of what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and how things are going to happen throughout the project. It can be scary. It can be a lot of moving parts, um, but we're here to help it, make it as seamless as possible. Um, we anticipate being substantially complete by August of 18. So, just about, uh, about 15 to 18 months of construction and then, uh, final completion for school start in 18 and then, uh, you guys can move right in. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at with the, with the overall schedule. Go ahead.
Just when, uh, we were looking at this a couple of years ago, we were bidding here. There was a couple of things to talk about. There was one, putting solar panel panels actually at the top. I know that was something, is there, I, uh, see that. And then the other thing is this hill, a zero percent tax increase.
The same money that we had before. Yep.
So, we're all within budget?
We are. Yeah, right now we're tracking well within budget. So, so to speak about the solar panels. So, we ran the numbers, uh, to do solar panel on the roof. Now, granted, we don't have a lot of roof area here and we certainly don't have enough room to do ground mounted. Um, the way that the, the NYSERDA incentives have kind of shifted, uh, the dollar per kilowatt versus the amount of roof area, um, it doesn't make financial sense for the district to do it. In other words, you then, you then end up having to pay to put it on the roof. Um, and while that, you know, environmentally it makes a lot of sense, from a cost-conscious standpoint, it just doesn't, the numbers don't work. Um, unfortunately, we're seeing that in a lot of our districts across the state right now. Um, just the incentive dollars that were there, uh, you know, even three to five years ago are just not there any longer. We're hopeful some of that will come back, um, but really the only successful solar products we're doing right now are gigantic, like two megawatt. Whereas there's 10 acres of solar panel on a, you know, on a farm somewhere in, in the district and it just isn't that, that level of, of, of land and/or efficacy to make it happen. So, I, I wish it was, I really do, but it's, it's just not financially feasible. Go ahead.
One point, there was a discussion of a concrete walking trail around and then that got nixed because of the fire lane that needed to be created in the back. Are there any other exterior plans that are, um, going to be happening?
Uh, with the site plan? We can actually reverse, yeah. So...
As far as like maybe recreation goes for the kids?
Well, we're... No. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Now, now, I should, I shouldn't say that. So, we're going to be moving the garden, making it a little bit larger. Um, the access from, from the, uh, from the building is actually a lot more direct to the playground, um, and it comes right out the back of the building, kind of scoots around the side there. Unfortunately, because of the fact that, um, there are, there are stormwater regulations with the amount of site disturbance that you can do. And because of the fire lane that SED was insistent upon us having around the backside of the building there, um, it, it basically put us over the one acre threshold. And once you get past one acre, now you have to do a lot of pretreatment of the stormwater before it goes into the ground. Now, that being said, it's not, just be, it can't happen within the confines of this project. Um, just because a, a fitness trail and/or an additional tennis court or, or a basketball court, um, that pushes it over that limit. But you can do it as a separate project in the future. So, there, there's still opportunity to do that. We try not to shoot ourselves in the foot with taking over too much site area. Um, but again, we, we, you know, as everybody knows, it's a very limited site, so it's, it's, it's tricky. Go ahead.
So, you just can't do anything new, like with the outside? And what about existing things that are there? So, my question is, we have five kids, my son just graduated with a T.I. Um, I think I've talked to Mary about this plenty of times before, um, the baseball field for...
Right. So, anytime we do any, whether it's new or whether it's site disturbance, um, anytime you basically tear up the grass and do anything with it, even if you're replacing it with grass, it counts as site disturbance. Um, so, again, stuff that can happen, sure. We can redo this, redo the softball field or baseball field out back. We just can't do it in the confines of this project without triggering a whole lot of other. Um, and it's really, it comes down to the, the stormwater management, but also the, the dollars associated with the solar project.
And, uh, all right, so I guess, so what if it was done before you guys do this project? Would that be possible? Like if, if I had a group, so my plan is, I'd like to make it interchangeable, meaning we're paying to rent the class of classy fields. I have enough guys, I think, would volunteer that could make that happen. So, if, if that came to light...
If it falls outside of the confines of the current Capitol construction project that's at, that's at SED right now, um, you know, that's, and that's something we can work with, we can work with the district on, but it would have to be a separate project in case of...
Is that something you would want, I mean...
We had talked about that in the past, turning, getting rid of the grass. I remember last year in the meeting, um, you guys had said, and I understand, if you trip up the grass and do anything with the soccer field or baseball field, you put your grass down, it's going to take a year for sod or seed to grow.
Yes, sod's a little less, but...
But with baseball softball fields, you can do multi-purpose fields, so we just go to a complete clay field, um, and therefore you have your 60.6-foot mound and then 43 feet for softball and you can move the bases. Therefore now, instead of us going to classy lassy and having to give them jump space and get, uh, rent, using their fields seven times and our girls practicing in the, in the corner by where we have a soccer goal, we can use the field, uh, for both of us and we can have home games for both baseball and softball. So, I think that would be fantastic.
You have enough resources. You have Dave Willett, um, Dave Willett, I want to have, you know, I bet you we got together with the metal cats. You know, we use it as, as, I have had my team to start taking the kids. We, we use the facility. Um, I mean, I'm sure there are people who don't have our building, it's a field for everybody to use. Uh, the firemen, I mean, and, and...
There's, yeah, there's, there's nothing that says you can't do it just as long, like I said, as long as...
As long as it's not in your timeframe and your...
As long as it's not within the confines of the Capitol project. Yeah, yeah. Both dollars and, and disturbance, right.
Time of question?
Sure.
Where's my stage?
Right there. Yeah. We can get that done later.
Where is it?
There it is.
Yay! There's the stage. Talent show, drama club.
So, we will have, uh, the stage will have theater rigging and, and lighting. Um, yeah, it's, it's, you know, we're not, we're not talking about, you know, the palace theater here, but it certainly will be able to, it'll have, it'll have, yeah, it's pretty close. Guys like, guys like, I'm gonna bang my head against the wall on this one, so. Um, it's a, it's a small space. We do a lot of these smaller space performance spaces, but they're, they're well-equipped to do the types of activities that you guys are going to need to do on it.
Thank you.
No problem.
And, uh, are we any, any additional parking space?
Parking space? So, that was the other kind of trade-off with, with SED. We're going to add about 10 spaces right here, which will make the transfer of students in the pre-K program a little bit quicker to get in the building at that entry. Um, because again, the site disturbance area, we talked about putting an additional parking on the, on the upper side of that. We actually did a design for it, um, but they kind of shot us down on it. They, they said you're going to be past the, the level of, of site disturbance that would allow that to happen. But again, possible in the future, just not within the confines of, of this Capitol project.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, the fire turnaround lane?
Yep.
Like which order are things going? Is that like the last thing? Because you guys are going to be trucking all kinds of big things back through my backyard? What's the deal with that?
Yes.
That's on my window.
Yes, so the, the areas, one of the things that we're going to be, um, that we're going to be using, and during the last Capitol project, we used the backyard for, for staging and storage of materials. Some of that backyard is going to definitely need to have that happen because there's not really anywhere else to do that. So, we're going to have steel, um, we're going to have concrete, you're going to have mortar, you're going to have brick, you're going to have materials that are going to be needing to be delivered to this zone. And this really is the only area on the site right now that is, that is not, that, that's open. So, there is going to be construction going on in the back there in place where we're going to stage things. We really want to stay away from this side of the building to get this...
Yeah, because of the fire. I get that.
Um, so really what's going to happen is that backyard is going to become a staging area for the period of construction and then it'll get all replaced at the end. Um, but the area that you see in gray here, um, that work will be one of the last things that happens. They're going to kind of do that on the way out, as it were.
Okay. So, last question, this is my son's question.
No, it's okay. Only stupid answer.
The last time we went, like, construction happened, so my room, I'm a science teacher.
Yep.
My room was upstairs, like, here, right? And they were digging with a big diesel machine outside my window for, that smell is horrific. And like, I'm not the only one that would bother, I'm just worried about that kind of stuff with the kids. I mean, sometimes we leave the doors open and the buses are running, it comes right down the hallway and you get like the dog smell once in a while, you know, depending upon the weather.
Sure, sure. I mean, again, a lot of it depends on the activities that are going on. Obviously, first and foremost is student safety, um, and occupant safety of the building. If there are construction activities that are going on that are, that are noxious or obnoxious to the people and the occupants of the building, you need to let us know so that we can control that as best we can. Now, I don't want to say we're going to tell them, stop work, everybody go home today.
No, I'm not.
That's not, that's usually, that usually doesn't go over so well.
Yeah, that adds much, right?
Well, and, and a lot of other things too. You end up with delay claims and all kinds of other stuff. But we endeavor to mitigate that as best we can throughout the process and that's why we're here. We're the construction managers and we, we're here working for you, so, so that's what that, and you know where I live.
And you probably said this already, but when are we planning to break down?
Uh, we're talking about starting in April, um, of this, of this, of 17.
It takes me a while.
Yeah. No, it's, it's okay. It's, unfortunately, because it's, it's been so protracted with the SED review times, um, and, and we're fortunate that we're through that process now because it's going to get worse. I can guarantee it with, with some of the shakeups we had at the, at SED over the last couple of months with Carl leaving and Chuck Sabrlo leaving and they're down to one project manager when we're supposed to have six. It's just going to snowball and really be a problem. So, we're fortunate that we're past that now for, for a large part. Um, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's the best we can do.
And Ed, you had said we're going to get some renderings for the hallways.
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to put these up in the hallways for everybody to see.
Exactly. So, the boards that we have, um, we're going to, we're going to do some boards of this, okay? Uh, we'll do some boards of this and we'll have those posted around the building so that people can see what's going to be going on. We fully, you know, and if, if people have questions or things after we go, Dr. Reardon's the conduit, he'll get us, he'll get the questions to us and we'll get them answered.
Can I just ask your hours?
Monday through Friday.
Is this, is this, does, does the construction start at say seven to three or is this something like the highway people where you're coming at, let's say two and you work till something?
It depends on what's going on in the school, yeah. Because, uh, the answer is both. Um, so during, during the, the non-occupied times in the building, uh, in other words, uh, when, when school's on session, in other words, uh, breaks over the summer, um, the, typically it's normal work, business hours. Um, we do tell the contractors in the bid that during, during the time when the school's occupied, they work off hours. So, they'll start at, you know, like you said, like three to six or, you know, there's, there's some trade-offs there. You know, there's, there's always some negotiation with the contractors because anytime you're working past the normal seven to 3:30 zone, you definitely pay a premium for that. So, uh, but, you know, again, student safety, school safety is most important. So, if it means we can't be working during those hours, so be it.
Well, the last question I have is, uh, we also talked about, who needs to talk about universal pre-K? Do we need to apply for universal pre-K and get that all set up? I got a little...
Oh, you apply, not...
Let's get some ball.
Actually, that's a great question. Actually, this is one of our, um, goals is we're going to be forming our pre-K committee that consists of our community members, uh, faculty, anyone that wants to be on it to kind of really design our program and kind of work all those pieces out. So, actually expect something coming out soon because we'd like to build up from the ground up with the community. So, you know, in terms of what age, you know, length of day, uh, do you apply, is it everybody? That kind of thing. So, stay tuned, that'd be great.
Do you know how mad my wife is that this isn't already built?
I love because I will be leaving. That's not fair.
Yeah, the schedule will be done by graduations of 2018?
Hope so. Well, no, for start of school in 18.
Eighteen.
Yeah, start of school in 18.
My child.
Yeah. You're welcome. Everybody gets something, just not at the time that you want. Any other questions? Do you guys have anything else that you're concerned or questioning about?
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Start with...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we will move on to 2.2, the District Superintendent Report.
Sure. Um, so let's get Ed and Kyle and thank you so much for joining us. All right? Let's see you soon. And I'm sorry, I mean, it's, I'm sorry.
Ashley.
Ashley, Ashley, thank you again. Ashley. Thank you. She's like, I'm sorry. So, once again, uh, just to kind of highlight the, the big piece that, uh, Principal Yotes is going to highlight is the opening of school. As you know, we gathered for two days prior to the arrival of your children. Had a great day that, uh, really I could put in words, but it's much, uh, more boring. Mary's going to put that in pictures, so it's great. Um, but basically, as you can see, we're just proceeding forward. We're all set. Um, we have our district goals and we're ready to go and receive with last year's goals. Um, just a little update besides the Capitol project, this is more of a downer, but it's a good thing. You might have seen some of the news with the lead testing and some of the water. Um, so just so you know, we are on schedule. We will begin testing, uh, hopefully next week. So, we're on schedule. The files are being picked up tomorrow. Um, so again, to be in compliance with that state requirement, Neil, myself and our safety inspectors are working together. So, again, there's a lot of hype. Do not worry, we are on top of this and ready to go. It's not really the most exciting topic, but again, put your mind at ease, so really. Um, but like I said, I'd like to turn it over to Mary, uh, to kind of take us through really what, what I would say have been a great, uh, eight days.
Yeah. We had a, uh, amazing start and I just want to say thank you to all of you for being here and supporting me. Yay! Although certainly I'm up to speed here today. You know, this is my fifth year here because I started as an assistant principal, so, um, you know what you got. It's been five years. Um, it has been amazing, an amazing time. Um, I hope you all keep me, I hope I get my tenure. I'll say my speech yet, but I just want to thank you all for being here. Uh, it's certainly been a pleasure and, uh, your kids drive me. I, I love, I love each one of them. The faculty has become family to me. Uh, Dr. Reardon has been amazing. This new board, my old board who actually, you know, took, took a chance on me. I thank you all and, uh, I love you all very much. And I just put a little slideshow together to show you what we've done the last, uh, couple of days and... So, as you can see, we've been extremely busy but having a great time together. And that's it, so my report.
Says it all.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah. Uh, PTO update?
All right. Um, yeah. For the second year in a row, I'm glad we worked, we made a profit. PTO was much more profitable. The profit I had, it was around 2,500. Um, so about half of the profit we made the previous year, but we're hopeful to make that up this year. So, as many of you know, we've been carrying kind of a high balance and we would like to spend it. So, we are looking for suggestions and I traded a paper and handed out to the faculty
PTO update?
All right. Yeah, for the second year in a row, I'm glad we're working in profit. PTO was much more profitable. The profit I had was around $2,500. So about half of the profit we made the previous year, but we're hopeful to make that up this year. So as many of you know, we've been carrying kind of a high balance, and we would like to spend it. So we are looking for suggestions, and I traded a paper and handed out to faculty and staff for ideas on how to spend. And we would like to spend like $10,000 for as long as I think of it. Like, we never spend money. We just hold on to it, and we never do anything with it. So we've got the programs that are kind of like running themselves with events, but there are a lot of things that are needed at the school, and the school can't pay for everything. So we're looking for suggestions. We're going to reach out to the parents and hopefully put that flyer online and pass that around, so, and have people submit suggestions on what they think. And of course, we, out of the box, lots are appreciated. I mean, we're looking from anything from books to after-school programs, to cubbies in the hallway for kindergarten, for backyard seating for the kids, a higher fence in the back in the middle school, so that the balls, that when they play for recess, the balls don't go over the fence, maybe some outdoor benches, another playground equipment to add on to the elementary school. So we're looking for all sorts of your ideas on what, how to best spend that. Of course, we can split that up into various things. So please look for that. And please, 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 please consider submitting a suggestion. When's the meeting? Oh, sorry. Yes, and we have our meeting coming up, first of the Tuesday, next Tuesday. So that would be the 12th? Yes. And so we have our meeting at 6:30 here right in the library, and the little social meet and greet with cookies and so forth is here at 6:00.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, we will move on to appointments and authorizations, 3.0. The agenda says consent agenda for 3.1 to 3.5, but we're going to change that. It's going to be 3.2 to 3.5. We're going to do 3.1 all on its own. I think she definitely deserves to be recognized on it. So 3.1. Be it resolved that pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent of school, the following be appointed to tenure to the position to which they have served the required probationary period as specified below. Mary Yodas, tenure area of K-8 principal. Commencement of tenure appointment, January 2nd, 2017, and her status will be permanent. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just say that I think we've had plenty of discussion with all the warm, wonderful things that people have said about Mary, so.
I just want to add that, you know, my couple of years that I've been back involved, it's been great seeing you interact with the parents and the staff, and that's all a big part of it. I swear I was going to cry. This is good, okay. When I was up here for kindergarten registration, and I saw numerous kids running up to you to hug you. That's what it's all about. You didn't seek them out, they came running up. Mrs. Yodas! When the second grader started, the first grader started coming, and the second grader started coming. And I'm like, you know what? Anybody can deal with parents and staff, but to have that, that love from the kids speaks volumes, volumes. So all your comments are greatly appreciated, but as far as I'm concerned, you're preaching to the choir.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Absolutely.
Do it, do it again.
We will do 3.2 through 3.5 as a consent agenda. 3.2, approve Sarah Sepp for extracurricular appointment for yearbook, 2016-17, as per the WTA contract. 3.3, approve Lance Maxson as six-month probationary bus driver, four hours a day, at $16.30 per hour, effective 9/9/2016. Approval of bus driver substitute, Anthony...
Chimpalilo.
Simp... Simp... Simpalo... Chimpalilo? Well, Anthony anyways. And then 3.2. Yeah. Approve shared bid with Questar for 2016-17 school year for the following, eat and grocery, Cisco, and Ginsberg. B, paper products, Hillenmakers. C, ice cream products, Gillette Creamery. D, bread products, Bimbo Foods. E, janitorial supplies, All-American Poly, United, EA Morris, Gabriel, Hillenmakers, Interboro Packaging, LJC, Lusco, and Unit Pack. Can I get a motion for all that?
Motion.
One second. Any discussion?
I would just like Dr. Weir to just explain quickly about yearbook and how it's a little bit different.
Sure. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. Absolutely. So actually, what we did decide to do was, yearbook for the past few years has been kind of buried into the Technology 8 curriculum, which kind of basically, Mr. Lutz always teaches Technology 7 and 8. So what, what happened was, Technology 8 meets every other day, so one section of Tech 8 would be yearbook, like ACE days, and the other section would be news meeting, which sometimes precluded that class from doing the traditional technology curriculum, you know, the project-based pieces, design drawing, things like that. So what we'd like to do is actually pull it out, yearbook was always meant to be an extracurricular activity, so by pulling it out, actually it allows that yearbook to be opened up to multiple grades, not just eighth grade, it could be elementary through middle. Again, it could be for-school, after-school, and Mr. Lutz would make a wonderful advise for that. But also, it allows Mr. Lutz to return that curriculum to Technology 8, to a true Tech 8 class. So it's actually a win-win for both parts, but it's another ex club ed to our list.
Good idea. Yeah, we didn't move.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Castle? Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Okay. 4.0, old business, need minutes format. I think we talked about this when we talked about the minutes, so I think we're good there. We have no new business. 6.0, informational. 6.1, our next regular Board of Ed meeting will be October 20th, 2016, at 7:00 PM, right here in the library. And 6.2, opportunity for the public to be heard. Do you want to go last again, Carl?
I'm all set.
You're all set. Okay. Kyle Bell.
Can I do mine if I put this stuff here?
Sure.
Thank you. So, so for the record, I'm acting in my parental capacity as a parent of a second-grade student here, I'm not in any professional capacity. And for the record, while this may be a legal presentation, I am in no way providing legal advice to the Board of Education as you have retained counsel. So with that, I want to discuss five issues for the record this evening. The first being open meetings law, the second being dignity for all students act, the third being possible violations of the American with Disabilities Act in Section 504 of the Office of Civil Rights Law, the fourth being violation of board policy, and the fifth being removal of board members by a Board of Education. So, we're going to jump right in, if that's okay.
Okay.
So under, under open meetings law, I wanted to provide information to the board and to the public about certain, and this is from a New York State School Board handout on open meetings law, I'll be happy to turn that into the board afterwards. I just wanted to read individual sections. And I know the board all knows this, so the open meetings law, of course, school boards are covered by open meetings law because school boards' meetings are public bodies. The open meetings law under Public Officer Law, Section 103 in sequence, requires that school board meetings be conducted to school board district business. This open meetings laws also applies to all other business of a school board. For example, public business includes not only binding votes of a board, but also any activity preliminary to a vote, or involves consideration of a matter that could be subject to board action. So open meetings law also, according to this school board document, provides for things like conversations that happen outside of the board setting, if it can possibly end up on an agenda. The third point is that while the rule does not apply to a casual or chance encounter by a board member not intended for purposes of doing business, so long as the encounter does not become an informal conference or agenda item, it is fine. But if the encounter amongst the board member does, according to this document, become an informal conference or an agenda item, that subject is subject to open meetings law. The concern with this issue in open meetings law is I believe that a board member who is not here in attendance has violated open meetings law. Under, again, Section 103 of open meetings law, I will turn this document over to the board to review, you know, with, with comments and actions that were made as a board member outside of open meetings. The second thing I wanted to talk about is dignity for all students act. The dignity for all students act was passed in 2010 and enacted in 2012. I know you all are familiar with the dignity for all students act. Just get my sight, hold on a second. And I want to make sure that everyone is aware of the dignity for all students act. What the dignity for all students act does is establish with the broad legislative intent to provide a school environment free of discrimination and harassment. This is from the enacting clause of the law. The goal of the act is to create a safe and supportive school climate where students can learn and focus, rather than fear in being discriminated against or verbally or physically harassed by school employees. The act provides a response to the large number of harass and stigmatized students, et cetera. What the act does is it states that dignity act, that no student shall be the subject to any harassment or discrimination by employees of a school district. I opine that the dignity for all students act has been violated by one of our board members not in attendance this evening. It is upon information and belief that there has been emails of harassing nature of both school employees and of students. I am aware of two emails that have talked about two individual students. One of them is a student with disability and qualifies underneath the American Disability Act, which I'll get to in a minute. The other is a sibling of this child with a disability, and I think that both of these emails violated the dignity for all students act, so I will leave this with the board as well. So the American with Disabilities Act, and Office of Civil Rights, Section 504, in the education of children with disabilities, says that, of course, it is important for the American with Disabilities Act enacted in 1990 to ensure that students with disabilities have a protective and safe environment in school buildings. Again, it's the important responsibility of the Office of Civil Rights to eliminate all discrimination on the basis of disability against students with disabilities, and under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. I also opine that because the, the discussion was about a student in an email that has a disability of that nature, that there could be a possible issue with the American Disabilities Act, so I leave this with you as well. I'm going to not talk about those two items because they appear to be resolved. And then I want to talk to generally about violations of board policy. So if you will, let me go through some of your board policy. So Policy 2000, it's a Board of, Board of Education operational goals by the Wyandotte School School Board. It's bullet number four. It states that should provide leadership in order that goals and objectives of the district as set forth by the board can be effectively carried out. Board of Education action should be confined to policymaking, planning, and appraisal with the board delegation authority to the superintendent. I opine that this is in violation by a board member who has overreached their authority as a board member. Policy, Board Policy 2100, legal status, states that the board will not be bound in any way by an individual statement or action unless the board, through an adoption policy or majority vote, has delegated this authority to an individual member. Again, I opine that this has been violated by a board member. Policy 2110.1, access to information. This board as an entity may make requests, information, which then will be made available for all board members to review. I opine that this has been violated by a board member. Policy 2111, board member authority, states that members of the Board of Education have legal authority for the conduct of school districts only when acting as a body in a properly convened session. Board of Education members acting as individuals have no authority over personnel or school affairs. I opine that this board policy has been violated by a board member. Policy 2700, board staff communications, states that all official communications, policy, and directives of staff interest and concern will be communicated to staff members through the superintendent. I opine that this has been breached numerous times by both resigned and board members not in attendance. So that's some board policy I wanted to, and I can send this to the district clerk if she'd like that. And then I wanted to refer to the school law book that is written by New York State School Boards Association. It talks about two sections that I wanted to make you aware of if you were unable to know these sections. There are two sections. Section 2:59 is a question, may a school board member be removed from office? The answer is yes. A board member may be removed from office in one of two ways, either by the Commissioner of Education or the school board itself. A school board's authority to remove one of its members from office is separate and distinct from the Commissioner's education's authority to remove a board member. And the removal process is as such in Section 2:61. The question is, may a school board member remove one of its own members from office? The answer is yes. A school board may remove any of its members for official misconduct that is conduct clearly relating to the school board member's official duties. This is so when a board member engages in unauthorized unexercise of power or intentionally fails to exercise power to the detriment of the district. Ed Law, Section 1709, parenths 18, double parenths. That was the case example, when a board member disclosed confidential student information via electronic means or discussed a student improperly. I opine that this is a, things that have happened in this district are grounds for official misconduct and for removal by, by a board. Removals also warranted where a board member settles employee grievances or have contacted staff without board authorization. Again, I opine that that is a way that can be removed for misconduct. And again, as referenced, this is the 34th edition of the school law book. So I give, I leave these documents for you in your review. I wanted just to thank the board for consideration of these items. I know your work is very hard, it's a very difficult job, probably one of the most difficult jobs in education, because you have to really balance the parents' need, the taxpayers' need, and the students' need. I understand we've had one of our board members resign. I don't think that work is done yet by this board, and I know many of the parents feel the same way in this district. I know you would have our full, full support moving for a removal process of board members who are acting in official misconduct capacities. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kyle.
And that is no legal advice, that is my personal opinion, for the record.
Can you off first?
Can we nominate Kyle to fill the vacancy?
Up next, Jill and Tim Plainer.
We're good.
I don't have as much documentation as Kyle did, but I just wanted to express my opinion to the board too, and to the community. I truly, truly am dexterous, so I believe we have everything right now that this district needs to move forward from anything from the past, to give the best education we can to these children. And I believe that we as a community have much more to give than many other communities. I have never seen an internal and external community love children so much as this place. And I know that at times, people's personal trends and behaviors, engagement in idle talk, turns into other things that hurt other human beings. That has no place here. I think and I hope that everyone feels that and believes it, because I think everyone's been hurt by that here personally, one way or another. We have everything we need for a perfect school. We have parents who love their children and support this school. We have staff who love these children and go above and beyond what many colleagues in other districts that I know go for, for these kids. And we now have leadership in Dr. Weir and soon-to-be Dr. Yodas, who defended her dissertation this week, and we should congratulate her on that formally. This leadership is going to take us to the next level for all our kids. People that have been here a long time and people that are new can feel the good energy here. And I truly believe that anything that has happened that seems negative, I believe, had come from a place of wanting better for what was going on here. To want a place of harmony, love, and true education for our children in a nurturing environment, I know that. And others may not see it that way, but that's what it is. I also want to urge that if anyone has opinions or concerns about the education of the children, or the building, or anything like that, to go to our administration or stand up at a board meeting, as many of us here have, and not to throw out assumptions or visions that they see from afar without standing behind it, either in name or in presence. This is my 17th year at this school. I hope to have many more. I truly love being here. We're all here by choice, every one of us sitting here. And I know this board goes through a lot as volunteers, double lot, as volunteer on this board, and people in the audience that have been on the board. And the parents who've been through a lot. I know Mrs. Gallagher talking, she's been here through many, many boards and many, many staffs. Yeah. She's still here praising the district. It's a special place. People need to realize how lucky we all are and celebrate it. Walk past the garbage and start fresh. Thank you for granting Mary tenure, stepped in the right direction, confidence in the right direction. Everybody needs to stop, look inside, and see what's most important, and move forward for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Murray. Up next is Sue Suda.
I'm all set.
Okay. Dawn Nardat.
She said everything.
Okay.
No, I do want to say one thing now. The last time I was at a board meeting was during the fiasco that really terrorized our kids. And, you know, since that time, we've had great leadership with Mrs. Yodas and also Dr. Weir, and, and most of my kids are happy and they're thriving and they're doing well. And it's nice to come to a board meeting to support them and support the board that's left. So far. I hope I don't have to come to another board meeting except for good things.
Thank you. Jackie Fezler.
I had originally had my little statement I was going to make. I'm just going to condense it because the audience that I wanted to hear isn't here tonight, as far as board members go. To consolidate it, I watched Mary have a really rough week. The board, after the last board meeting, everyone showed support of our administration, and then it seemed some nasty anonymous notes started coming to the district that really could have ruined Mary's career. I'm glad the board did not acknowledge them. I would like you, though, to make a statement from now on in. If the clerk receives an anonymous letter, it goes in the shredder. It's not going to be read, it's not going to be acknowledged by anybody. If you can't sign your name to it, then don't send it in. If you can't sign your name to it, then don't send it in.
Thank you, Jackie.
That would be me. I came here tonight, had a lot of questions, and I was going to ask, but everything's not necessary. There's no reason or need to dig and ask any questions, I can. I think you guys on the board know that we support Ms. Yodas, Dr. Yodas, and Dr. Riordan and the teachers. If you come from us, please support us and support them and support the teachers. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Secretary Terry.
I'm good.
Okay. Lisa Karen?
I do have some things that I wanted to say that have kind of been altered, but what I would like to say is that Jim and I have had kids in the district for 15 years. Our youngest graduated in June, and, huh, see, I'm just like... I really had no intention of coming back to a board meeting, but I felt the need to support Dr. Riordan and certainly Mary Yodas. This faculty has been a family to us, and I hope that it will continue to have that family feel. I want to thank each and every one of you on staff that has been so wonderful to our kids. Successful students come from happy kids, and happy kids come from happy, successful, competent teachers and staff and administration, and this district has it all. Never lose sight of that. Thank you.
So, a couple of people I know are gonna ask Katrina to resign this meeting, and she has sent resign. I would like to officially request that Pat resign. I fully, 1,000%, trust Dr. Riordan in every decision that he can make for our students. He is loving to our children. He is responsive. He answers emails in writing, which is something that, you know, we didn't experience a lot in the past. So, with that being said, what Kyle said was amazing, it brought me tears. I have a child with a disability, and I do not ever want to have to go through what another child had to go through in emails. If Ian's names were in those emails, I would lose it. So, thank you, Kyle, for saying something, and I fully support Pat resigning from this board so we can all move forward. That's it.
That's all that we have that have signed up. Does anybody else, if they'd like to say anything? Michelle Me?
I want to congratulate Mary. We had ups and downs. And that is so awesome that you know our kids, that you spend most of the time with them, more than we do. And I know that we can trust you, and we don't have nobody else better than you are. Thank you.
If you want to, I have had a board member, oh, I'm sorry, resign in the middle of this meeting. What is the process for replacing her? Anybody, I implore anybody out here who is eligible to run, consider running for the board, we need you, people who are intelligent, people who are caring, people who are willing...
Supportive of the administration.
And supportive of our school, so please run. So, would you please address...
Secretary Terry.
No.
Okay, so from the last time that we've had somebody resign, what the process has been is the board gets together and we decide what the process will be to replace that person. So, I don't want to say what it'll be, you know, it literally just happened, so we have to get together and figure out how we want to move forward. So, I don't... Go ahead.
Last time you got stuck with me, so I'm not too sure about that.
Ann Mallon, I volunteered this school to move on, Andy was in kindergarten until he just graduated last year. And I just want to say the positive difference that I saw happen in this school with the kids and the teachers and everything, when Mr. Bordech and Mrs. Yodas came here, and then when Mr. Bordech said he was leaving, I was terrified. But now we have Dr. Riordan, and Dr. Riordan, you have my full support. Mrs. Yodas, you have my full support. I am here tonight because of both of you. I left a conference to come here to support you. And I just want everyone to know that we cannot take a chance of going back to the way it was before. It was horrible. There was fear in the hallways, there was, it affected the children, and I saw it on a weekly basis. And the board has got to take action. I think action has been outlined.
It's only an opinion.
Has been outlined, eight, 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 possible path forward, has been outlined, and I would implore you to think about what we were before, if you remember, and what we are now, and do everything in your power to not let us go back to that before. And keep Dr. Riordan and Mrs. Yodas, who are doing a beautiful job.
One last time?
I just want to say I want to thank you for, and Mary, and Kathy, and all the teachers, and the families, and everybody. You guys are doing a great job. You have some class, you do. You guys are amazing. So, thank you for giving up your time, listening to us, and caring about our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we... Anybody need an executive session?
Can I request? No?
Oh, you want to...
Can I request an executive?
Oh, sure, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
For which reason?
To discuss, okay, which one does it fall under?
By six.
Yeah, go with six. That covers a lot, so, six.
So, that's a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, second. Sorry.
A little favor? Yes. Yes.
Can I give Mary a hug first, though?
Sure.
Before we go over to the nine closed doors.
I'm gonna hurry that you get in there.
Here, sure.
Is that it after this?
That's it.
Thank you.